I'd like to call a meeting of June 18th of the City Council, if the City of Cannon Falls to order. Roll call please.
Bringle, here. Duncan, here. Gesmi, here. Lundell, here. Mattson, here. Umri, here. Althoff, here.
Would you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Let him go.
Motion by Bill and second by Morris to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you in the audience at home, I'll go through and read the consent agenda. Item A, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending June 12th, 2019. Item B, minute meetings for the June 4th, 2019 City Council meeting. Item C, Resolution 2427, acknowledging withdrawal of rezoning request. Item D, Resolution 2431, adopting a reimbursement grant for Cannon Falls Deputy Register Number 138. Item E, annual funding agreements. Item F, temporary license, liquor license and request for road closure for VFW Post Item G, Resolution 2428, establishing user fees for John Birch Park. Item H, Resolution 2429, supporting Phase 2 of the CSHA Southeast Collector, which is Highway 24 connecting to 25 and 19. Item I, Resolution 2430, authorizing removal of concrete apron. Item J, park installation bid. Item K, approve lot access for the Haynes Project. Hayes Project, excuse me. And item L, approve utility credit for Olmsted County Medical Center. Is there anything the council would like to bring down?
G.
Yeah, G.
We will make G, item 6B on the council business. Is there anything else? Then I think entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda with the exception of item G. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Derek and second by Mary Jill to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item G. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, that leads us to council business, food truck discussion.
I'll just ask the mayor and council, if you wanted to delay that and do the consent item first, that would be fine with me unless the folks who are here for that item would like to participate in the food truck conversation. It's up to you. It's gonna take a few minutes to go through, I think, the food truck conversation.
Oh, okay.
Your choice. Well, let's go to, let's go to the John Birch Park, item 6B. Okay. Input? I just want to know a little more about it, a little bit. I know, Mike, you can...
Yep, I'll talk about it a little bit. It started getting visited here at some point over the winter. I don't remember when. We got more serious about it at a commission meeting in February where we had some members from the Bears and Legion there. We had a park board meeting. It wasn't necessarily to talk about fees and I think the school was at that one where it was kind of talked about off, off the record maybe a little bit, but...
I believe that was the night of the tornado. That was all the way back last...
Yeah, we ended up not having a consensus, but I know it was talked about with members at that meeting. And, you know, I guess members of the commission right now have met and have voted that they think there should be some kind of a set user fee specifically for football and soccer because they tear the field up a little bit more than baseball does. One thing I was asked to look at was the electric fees that we're charging. We've been charging traditionally $50 for the night games. So that was some old rates that hadn't been looked at and from what I could tell, over a decade. So we ran the meters and clocked them down there for a couple hours. It's hard to, it's hard to come up with this is what it is per hour or per game because there's winter fees and there's summer fees. There's two different electric charges you get. And the meters aren't split down there, so it's not just running the lights. It's running the stuff in the concession stands and stuff like that. So we tried to isolate it the best we can. And working with Excel on that, they, they thought with what we were charging with $50 is a little bit light. They said, you know, if you're looking to recoup all the energy costs from these lights with what the wattages were, they thought, and if you averaged about four hours on each time, they thought $75 was a little bit more appropriate than the $50 we've been charging. But that's, that's what they came up with with that. We, we went through a lot of electric bills over about two years to kind of try to find the average and figure out what was going on there. So that's what I reported back to the commission on that when that was requested of me. And that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at, is where it's evolved to. In the last commission meeting, it was brought up by Bill and then they made a, made a motion that had passed two to one, one abstention to move forward with the fees that you guys see in front of you, which is $200 for football and soccer and then to up the fee for the lights from 50 to $75. So that's a little bit of the story, how we got to where we're at.
I guess I would add, how do I want to say this? What we're, what we're looking at voting on tonight, everything will remain the same except that we're upping the light fee and, and charging for football and/or the few soccer games that do get played there because it does rip up the field quite a bit. It takes a lot of work on part of our public works guys. Matter of fact, I was at a baseball game last night and where the bleachers sit for the home team, the grass there still hasn't healed 100%. So that's an issue. I know the city used to have an agreement with the school. I think that expired...
2015.
Or 16 actually expired. And since that time, which would be three school years, everybody's done the same thing. The school does their part, the city does their part, even the bomber boosters have done some of the field prep. And there was also in that document, which I believe, Mike, you have a copy of, the city never has, but we always had the option in that document to assign a user fee for the field.
Yeah, it says in there that there's a fee schedule that we could set, you know, for the field in there. We never have, we've just stuck with the light one.
Right.
And I'll, I'll speak on a little bit of what the school does too, kind of clear the air on that. It's, it's not just the school. I mean, the Bears, the Legion, the school, it is a team effort down there. So, I mean, I don't want, I don't want anybody to get the wrong impression like somebody's not holding up their end of the bargain. Even though this lease agreement expired in 2016, the school is still doing, where they provide their own portable bathrooms, they pick up their own garbage. I believe the bomber boosters are running a fundraiser right now for a scoreboard because I know our Fire Department Relief Association just gave $2,000, I believe, to that. You know, we're, the, the John Birch Park supporters, that's headed up by a lot of the Bears members from what I can tell, they're, they're working on the bathrooms right now. So it is a, it's a community event, I think, down there to keep that going. So I do want to speak on their behalf too because I know I've had a lot of concern from them about wanting to put the fees on there. As a public works director, I mean, I'll, I'll take what money I can get, obviously, to run my budget, but I also don't want to stress, you know, good relationships that we have as well. So that's, that's the only concern that I have is if it does stress that and maybe, I don't know if anybody's had, been contacted by anyone from the school about that, but that'd be the only thing I would be cautious with, with moving forward with fees. Not saying that we don't spend a lot of money. I mean, so far this year, this includes Archie Swenson Fields, but we have spent, by the end of May, we were already at $4,400 and that was just in electric charges for athletic fields. So that's between Archie Swenson and the school, which I'd say 80% of the use of Archie Swenson is school related and we don't charge any fees or anything down there as well, you know, but we do have a, I think we provide them a great place to come down and do that stuff, which, you know, we want to continue to do. It's a good community thing. So there, there's a lot of moving parts to this. You know, I know, I know Bill's strong, you know, he wants, wants to move forward with this and wants to do that. The commission does support it right now. You know, as a director, I do, I don't mind taking, taking fees, but I also am concerned about, you know, just wanting to stress some really good relationships that I have with a lot of community event, you know, community things going on down there right now. So that's, that's the only thing I would caution on.
A couple of the school board members have talked to me and it's not the concern of the lights, maybe the $75 a game is justified. It's the $200 that you want to charge for their use. They want to, you want to charge $200 for football games, junior varsity and soccer.
Yep.
Is $200 justified and what do they get for their money? Just the mowing? Or are you going to clean up the trash after a game, which the school does now? They have volunteers to pick up the trash. What, how many hours are put into each week of a game mowing the lawn?
I mean, right, right now athletic fields, so far to date, we've spent $11,000 on wages just between the two facilities already this year, you know? So it's, I mean, we spend, right now, this year, 2019, we have budgeted $32, $31,900 for athletic fields and that's just to take care of Archie Swenson and John Birch Park. And we'll spend almost all that, you know? We usually do. We're right on, usually on the budget line for that. Most of that is staff time because we do have, we do have, there's compaction, impact and mowing type ratios we have to stick to to allow high school sports to play on that field. So that's why it's watered as much as it is, but it also makes us have to mow it as much as we do. And it's in our contract to mow it at least twice a week to maintain the heights that we need. Usually in the summertime with the watering we have to do, it's usually Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We're usually, we're down there in between games and what's going on and we're usually three times a week mowing it, fertilizer prep, just, just things. It's a, to maintain a field like that isn't, it's not easy. It's labor intensive.
But then the school board says too, it's a park, you've got to mow it anyhow.
We do, we do. I mean, it's like any other green space in town. This one's quite a bit more.
But we wouldn't have to mow it the same. We wouldn't have to mow it the same because we have to keep it a certain...
Because the league...
Right.
But Mike has also made the case...
It's gotta be a certain height for a game.
It's more than just the mowing.
Right.
We made this case at Public Works in February. If it was just mowing, that's one thing, but football and soccer tear up the field so the extra work, like you said, the compaction, the aeration, the seeding, the rolling, there's a lot more extra work. That's why baseball could play there every day of the year and the field would stay in pretty good shape and it'd be mostly just mowing for maintenance costs, same with Archie Swenson. But that's why it's football and soccer. And I want to shed some light on this. There was an email that said that we're just going after the school. That is false. If there was a town soccer team or if there was a town football team, we'd be charging them the same because it's using the field and the damage that they do to the turf and what the city has to do to maintain that. That's why we talked about not going after baseball. That was the case that was made in February and that's why I support it.
Right. And it's, it's not unusual for school districts throughout this state to have to pay fees for facilities that they themselves do not have. It's very common. I know an example was Cannon played Lourdes in the HBL championship game and it was at Lourdes and they had to pay $400 for a baseball game. So these fees are pretty nominal. It seems to have gotten blown way out of proportion for the $2,000, $2,500, but we do have a real cost with, with the field being torn up. I spent a couple of years on the chain gang of football games and we had back-to-back weeks where it rained and mud. I mean, literally clumps of grass just coming out of the field. It was, it was horrible. And that cost should not be borne by us.
Yeah.
In a perfect world, yeah, they put football up at the high school because it's got those nice stands and everything else, but that's a pretty spendy project for the school to do.
I wonder too, the thing I thought of was if, if the games were not played at John Birch, they would be paying to maintain another field and they'd be paying custodial fees and all to open up the concession stand and the bathrooms and the school because the boys would be using the locker rooms for football as well. And I just, I wonder if they could even put on a football game for $200, you know? I mean, we might be actually giving them a pretty good deal in that, in that respect. No one likes fees, but I also think the other thing I, I thought of just today was the number of times during the eighties that, God love him, Dick Jacobson came into the bank and talked about those stands they were getting behind home plate. That's a baseball field. That's a baseball diamond. You know, I, I just, I don't think, we're, we're kind of doing the square peg in a round hole thing with the football team playing there. I think it's great because they, they can't play up at the school right now, I don't think. But it does tear that field up. And I was at, I haven't been to a game recently, but I know on seniors, on senior night for baseball, I looked and it was really still torn up in, in center field, you know? I know, and that's, that's all I have.
Well, to Mike's point, maybe there is some cost and maybe the school should pay something, but again, it's been going on like it has for a long time and I don't want to really strain our relations with the school either.
Well, Mike, how much do you think extra we pay to have football on there as opposed to if we just had baseball? I mean, I know it's probably hard. Gas depends on rain, but...
It is. I mean, it just depends on the length of the season. I mean, really, are we going to overseed it probably every fall? We usually do, you know, and I think that would happen. I mean, it's, it's usually because of football, that's when it's torn up. So we do an overseed, so it takes in the spring nice. You know, the staff, we do, we do have a little bit of a lull between baseball and football where we might get by mowing it once or twice a week, you know, just to keep them... The thing is, we don't, we don't have a, we don't want to bag it every week too. So that's why we do, we don't want all the grass clipping sitting on there hurting the turf too. So that's why, reasons we keep it short so we don't have to worry about that. So I mean, to that point, I mean, are we going to have to maintain it almost virtually the same way, whether it's football or baseball? Yeah.
Yeah.
We do. The other thing too, I mean, I've been thinking a lot about this last couple of days with a lot of the phone calls I've had and we do have that expired lease agreement and that does state a lot of the duties that the school has to do. Some of that, I mean, we don't do any of the cleanup of the field after football or baseball. They take care of their own garbage. They haul their own garbage away.
Right.
And I don't have to put any of my staff time in to turn it on the lights, opening the field up, locking the gates. I mean, we do have a good enough relationship with them that they take care of it themselves. You know, I don't have to commit somebody down there to make sure it's locked up at night, the lights are off, the garbage is gone, the bathrooms are locked. I mean, I've never had a complaint, it hasn't gone that way yet. I've been here a short amount of time, but I think it's always been that way.
But that's also the baseball teams as well.
Right. Them too. Yeah. You know, so that, that is a bit of a concern if we start going into fees, you know, and we don't have a technical user agreement with them right now, are they going to step? I just don't want them to step back and say, all right, city, then take care of your field. We're done with it. And they walk away and leave the gates open and the lights...
Well, then they don't have to play here.
Not saying that's what's going to happen, but it's...
They can play somewhere else.
Well, if a person rents a city park, they're responsible for the cleanup and the tear down and...
Yeah, and we, we pick up the garbage is there, but we like that they put everything in the cans.
At least, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there is, I mean, they do, most people in town, it depends on your event and the, what you're renting, but like a park valiant's a hundred bucks to rent that for an afternoon, you know, on a Saturday afternoon is what we charge for that, so...
What's, what's the number of events? Times 200?
That would get billed to 200, well, it'd be the...
No, I mean, how many, how many events?
About five.
Five to six.
Five to six, five football games, one soccer game?
Is usually...
No, it's, it's a bit more than that.
The school, last year, the school paid the city $400.
Well, that was for the, that was for the lights.
That's for the football games, $2 for the lights.
They've been playing some junior high down there too, which...
I, I think we're limited now to just varsity JV and varsity soccer. I think those are the only groups we allow.
So you could be looking at like, you know, four JV games, four varsity games and a soccer game at the $200 fee.
Like one or two soccer games a year, is that what it usually is?
There's been one. They just do one varsity game down there is what they've been doing.
Okay. We can't talk. Folks gotta be kidding me.
This isn't public input.
Yeah, I don't care. You have to be kidding me. Well, just sit down. Yeah, really?
We can talk about it later.
Yeah. You burn a half a million or more dollars over here at the police department every year, for Christ's sake. You're talking about $1,000? Jesus. Come on. Get realistic. Put a P in the house.
So probably 10 events, give or take?
Yeah.
We're talking about two, two and a half grand, is that the total?
If you do your increase on the light fee and the user fee by $2,500 at the most. Yeah. Give or take.
But for 75 bucks, I mean, for lights...
And I guess that's, that's a, I know it was going to get pulled and that, that's the question I think the council needs to answer. Is that worth possibly stressing a good relationship or do we think it's worth it in our budget we spend $30,000 on for athletic fields that we need that in there? I mean, that's, I think that's where the question's at right now. You know, is that, is that where we're at?
The problem is, is that it's an athletic field, it's not a city park. Residents cannot use John Birch Park, only the ball teams can.
Because it's locked.
That's how this discussion started in the first place, isn't it, Bill?
Right, exactly. It's locked, it's not a park. I don't, I don't see the problem with doing this. It's so common. You think of schools, they got to play, you know, hockey, football, swimming, the kind of fees they got to pay for facilities that is not theirs.
Yeah.
This is a minor amount. Put a little skin in the game, so to speak.
I understand the, you know, it's only a couple thousand dollars. Well, that's on the other side too. It's only a couple thousand dollars on the other side. And, you know, are you, I, I don't know. I, I think it sounds to me like it's reasonable given the amount of wear and tear on that field. I really do. And we're not talking about, we're not going to charge the baseball team, we're not, we're just talking about football that really tears it up. I mean, I suppose we could, you know, itemize it for a year and see if it justifies the cost, but I'll bet it does.
Oh, easily.
I would wager it does.
Is there any, is there room for any public comment at all?
Could we invite him to the podium?
Certainly, Mike, you're here, school rep.
Sure, Mike, come on up. Yeah, come on up, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. I don't think there's, nobody's denying the fact that football beats up that field a little bit. We do know that. I think what really started and got our hackles up to start with was the way in which this happened. All of a sudden, we're hearing that, that user fees are going to be charged for the athletic field and we've had a relationship with the city for how many years? You know, kind of a quid pro quo, I think, is what it is. And we'd like that to continue. So the fact that we weren't notified...
Were you notified of the meeting in February? Have you seen the minutes?
I was not, no.
Have you seen the minutes?
I know Bob was there.
Right, but have you seen the minutes?
I have not seen the minutes.
Would you like to see them?
Sure.
Or do you want me to read it?
You can read it.
Okay. So these are the minutes from February 13th. Bill was talking about John Birch Park, fees. A consensus was reached by the end of the discussion to have Bob Brentonall discuss with the school board. He will present the fee increase from 50 to $75 per night, per game, and implement a $200 user fee for each football game. Bob will report back to Mike and he will adjust the current agreement for commission approval.
Did Bob agree to that?
That's what he...
Because he was not there at that meeting representing the school. He was there representing American Legion, Legion, from what I understand.
He said that he was there representing the Friends of John Birch Park. However, he said, "I can't speak for the school board..."
Right.
"...but this sounds like an agreeable solution and I will bring that to them." That was February 13th.
Right.
And the next communication on this issue was from Bob to some members of the Public Works Commission on May 15th. So that's three months where there was no communication.
Right.
And we, we had the understanding, and you're right, he was at that meeting and he said, "I'm a friend of John Birch Park. However, I will bring this to the school board for you." And that, and I can tell you, the city administrator was there, the mayor was there, Bill was there, I was there, Mike was there, members of the Bears were there.
So was there any, were we going to be notified after, you guys approved this, we didn't know about it, we see it on the agenda. Now, yes, May 15th or whatever it was, February, Bob was there.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine. He didn't, he was there as, as the Legion member, not as the school board member. We don't like to overstep our bounds.
Well, if it's a conflict of interest...
He can't make the decision for one, for the, for the group, so...
And he wasn't, but he said he would, he would communicate it to you.
In light of the relationship that we've had for all these years, I think it would have been nice to have a formal invitation extended to our facilities commission or even the superintendent. Beth East didn't know anything about this. So I think the way in which it went about, even starting last fall, it would have been nice to, for somebody last fall to say, "Hey, Public Works kicked this around, what do you guys think? Let's sit down and talk about it. Let's figure out what we can do to, to make this agreement, you know, work for both of us." We're not saying we shouldn't pay anything, I don't, I don't think. Is that money going to go to a fund to repair John Birch Park or does it get absorbed into the general fund? Mike alluded to some of the things that the scholastic does do, the garbage, the security there, the lining of the field, the fences, porta potties that we rent. What we're hoping that we could do is to table this resolution so we can just get together as two groups and try to get to, you know, get the facilities committee to meet with Public Works to try to mesh this out and come up with an agreement that works for both of us. I mean, we know that, that the field gets beat up. A couple of years ago when it rained in that playoff game, it was really beat up. I also know that when there's been floods, members of the community have come together. Jeff Baxter, who at the golf course donated his time because it was the right thing to do. It's a civic organization. And I think that's where we felt a little bit slighted in the way this whole thing going.
Now, Mike, excuse me. At that February meeting, what Matt didn't mention, the $200 was actually Bob's suggestion and he also told us, "Well, I can't get it on the February school board meeting." We understood that, but he said he would put it on the March one. The law was dropped at that point.
Well, unfortunately, Bob's not a member of our facilities commission, which is where this would have been discussed and where we would still like to discuss it. Let's get that agreement resurrected that, that expired three years ago and let's, let's spill out what, what our responsibilities are after the game. Yet, do we continue to pick up the trash? Do we lock the doors? Like Mike alluded, the 75 bucks is cool, that's fine. Talking to Mr. Althoff over here, the public works director, yeah, that sounds like that's a fair cost. So we don't have any issue at all with being charged extra for the lights. I mean, that's probably a long time coming. We would just like to get together and sit down and try to hammer out a, a resolution to this problem that works for everybody.
Do you, Mike?
But we did try to simplify this by only bringing forth the increase in lights and the user fee for the field. Everything else was going to stay the same. the user fee for the field, everything else was gonna stay the same. You know, you guys do your share, we do our share.
Okay.
The boosters do their share.
So, we just, okay, so the two-hundred dollars is what for then? Just for field repair?
It's because there's extra work with the field.
I mean, is that what it is? It's for field repair?
Yeah, extra work with the field, extra, because of the, because football is different. Now, I had a question, I don't know if you'd walked in when I asked this earlier. Do you have any idea?
Is this about M&amp;M's or Sweet Tarts?
No!
Starburst.
Starburst tonight.
First time, sorry.
Do you have any idea how much it costs the school, how much it would cost the school to put on a football game at the school?
Oh, there, there's no way we could do it, we know that.
Okay.
I mean, there's not, there's no way we could do it.
Okay.
We couldn't, I, I mean, if you guys pass these fees tonight, and we said to act with you guys, we would have no other choice but to act, we have to, and pay the fee.
Well, no, and, because I'm not, I, I don't think anyone up here, at least I don't think so, is trying to be mean or arbitrary, and I, I do think after chatting with Matt, I think there was a fair expectation on the part of at least Public Works that that was gonna go to the school board. I mean, we don't know if, you know, if, if I come here to a meeting and I'm a city council meeting, mi- member, I'm also a member of First English Lutheran Church, so if someone asks me to do something at the church, I don't have to say, "Just hang on, that's not my job tonight." I mean, Bob Brentonall has been around forever, and he's been on the school board for a long time, and he's very well-respected, he's been part of that baseball program for a long time. And I don't think it's fair to say that, well, our Facilities Committee wasn't, you know, wasn't dealing with it. I think if that was some, Bob's been on the school board long enough that he should've said to this Public Works Commission, "Hey, this gotta go to the Facilities Commission." They didn't know that. I've never heard of the Facilities Commission, because I don't work on the school board. So, I don't think anyone's, I, I mean, I understand you feel kinda ambushed, and I, I get that, because I don't know that you've been involved in the discussions.
Right.
But Bob was, pretty heavily.
Yep, and in no way, shape, or form are we trying to, there's no price gouging, we didn't say, "Well, what, I mean, this was something that we talked about."
I don't think you are, no. I, I mean, the two-hundred dollars might be reasonable, but I, I just wish we could sit down and hammer it out and talk about it. And get a divvying up of these responsibilities, take that agreement that used to be in place, and update that, just so everybody knows that, yes, this is what we're doing, this is what we have to do, and this is what's expected of the city, right? The grass has to be cut a certain length, so that's all we're really doing, is asking to table a resolution until we can get our two groups together.
What if we set it for a year, and then revisit it in a year? Because my, my fear with tabling is that nothing ever happens if we just keep tabling and tabling. But what if we set it for a year, and said, "If at the end of the year, we discover we're not spending that kinda money, we'll do a prorata rebate."
Or maybe next summer, we have a joint board meeting where representatives from the facility with the school board also meet with Public Works, or...
Right, but, you know, in that instance, too, I also know that if we get together a year from now, chances are that these fees aren't gonna go away.
Well, but if we only set the agreement for a year, and then watch it when it expires...
So, what if, what if we set, what if we put on the agenda for July eighteenth? Between now and then?
Well, I mean, yeah, but...
If, if we don't come to an agreement by then, then your resolution goes into effect? I mean, we're okay with that.
I think Mary Jill's suggestion of trying it for a year, run, then Mike can keep track, and then come back, and if we have to prorate, fine. If we find it's more, then maybe we have to, maybe it's a higher rate, I don't know.
But, I mean, I think, I think, Mike would be fair about it, we, they'd be watching him like hawks to make sure he's right, and, you know, try it, and, but truly revisit it. I mean, we've had an agreement here that expired years ago, that nobody's really looked at.
I mean, it's your park, you can do what you want.
Yeah.
And, and we have to either take it or leave it, so, I mean, you, you know what, you know my feelings, and you know the feelings of...
I know, but I think...
Of somebody like the Patriots.
But I think, too, if, if you know you're gonna get it back if it's not spent, you know, really, if we find out, "Hey, you know, this really only costs us, you know, seventy-five bucks a game, is this worth it?" We'll give it back to you, Mike, really, we will.
But then, that, that kinda goes back to my point where it's not necessarily about the monetary figure. We would just like to get together to talk about it, to figure out what it is we're supposed to be doing. There's no agreement in place, so I suppose we don't have to pick up garbage after the game, right? If there's no agreement in place.
Yes, you do.
Yes, we do.
Yes, you do.
We would, we, we would, and make sure the lights are turned off, and, you know, we, we would do all that stuff, but let's just get it in writing.
Yeah, we've been operating under, without it for three years, and everybody has done better.
So, let's, so let's sit down, let's figure it out.
I think we oughta try it, and...
So, then we'll go at it with no contract in place, just the user fees?
No.
No, you would still be responsible for what you had been doing.
Okay.
We're just, this resolution is just about the changes that we're making.
Yeah. You know, we still would, we'd still do all the mowing, the watering, the, you know, everything the city's been doing, and if we need to put a new agreement in place for the one that expired, we can. But, I mean, I, I can understand why you're feeling, you feel ambushed, you do, I get it, I get it, but I don't think you were.
So, let's do this. I'm gonna go sit down, and you guys vote, and we'll see where it goes from there, because obviously, I can't say anything else that's gonna, you know, change anybody's mind regarding this, so there's no sense in me standing up here and taking people's airtime away.
Yeah.
So, thank you for your time, at least thank you for considering it, drop.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I just say a couple things?
Sure.
Before you guys vote on it?
Are you with the school?
I'm a student at the school.
Okay, yes, I'm by George.
Oh, okay, sure, you're a student, come on up.
What's your grade point average?
Uh, three point six-six, um, so it's not great.
He knows it, I'm impressed.
Um, so, I guess this is more of just a question that I don't know if you guys specifically can answer, but with this user cost, that's going directly to the school for whatever game that it is, and then it's the school's decision to either make it that the football program has to help pay for it, or the school out of, I think, as Mike stated, kinda like the general budget, is that what it would have to come to the school board to discuss?
You mean how this, how the school would pay for it?
Yeah, so that, that would come up.
That's up to the school.
Okay.
Just for type of thing.
And then, I also would like to, I, I'm completely fine with the fee, I don't have anything against it. I do, however, believe that the two-hundred dollars, in my opinion, is a little steep. I, I'm not, I have no idea how much it costs to kind of maintain that field, but I do believe that, kinda as Bill brought up, how the Lourdes game cost four hundred dollars for it. Lourdes in Rochester as a whole is a lot bigger school, and has a lot more money that they can divvy up that way. Cannon Falls is just not that big of a school, we don't have that much funds, in my opinion. So, I kinda wanna agree with Mike in, say, table the discussion and try and hash it out, because in my opinion, when I saw the two-hundred dollars, I was like, "I'm fine with the fee," but two-hundred dollars for a game? I don't know how many football games are home, but I just, I thought that was pretty steep. I, I would, I was thinking about it, and I was fine with like a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and seventy-five, but in my opinion...
Two, the two is...
The two-hundred plus the seventy-five dollars to use the lights for varsity game, I, I just, I thought that was a little steep. But that's my opinion, and then, but yeah, I just kinda wanted to voice a student's opinion on it.
Thank you for coming and making your voice be heard.
Yeah. Thank you.
What if, what if we split the difference and went to a hundred, just started with a hundred per game?
What if we did, could we just do a flat rate that would encompass not just John Birch, but Archie Swenson, and, and just be for basic rent for all the parks?
So, for each activity?
Wouldn't that be higher than two thousand dollars a year?
Well, we could determine...
I mean, and that's why, I mean, we've made cases where this number might be low.
They penalize the team if they go to state and have...
Oh, right.
Own playoff games, you know?
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
Well, true, that's true.
Sure, good point.
That's true. So, just make it like...
Two thousand five hundred?
Two thousand, fifteen hundred, or whatever.
Two thousand a year? So that it doesn't matter how many games they play?
Just a thought.
No, it's not a bad one.
Makes the math easy.
So, do we have to change the resolution?
That's true.
And not vote tonight?
We, if we had a motion to say it was just two thousand dollars for the school for the football and baseball season...
Flat, flat rate, and you're gonna define, limited to soccer and football, as you have here, and just set a flat rate?
Varsity and JV.
Yeah, and I would like to see us definitely revisit it this next year, and put it, I mean, if we have to, put ticklers out there every month, but let's look at it next year and see if that's fair.
And, and meet earlier in the year, so that, part of the thing, because I got accused of rushing this, and I don't know how you can say it's rushing when I started last September...
I know.
Uh, it was actually to help the school out on their budget, knowing that they would have maybe an extra couple thousand they gotta spend.
It's how, it's how they feel, and perception's reality, and I think when, you know, fairly or unfairly, we may have been assuming too much that what, what Bob was able to do, and I'm not trying to say he can't do things, but I hate to blame him, I hate, and I see what Mike's getting at, you know, that he doesn't feel like there is communication. So, I would like, in that, if we're gonna charge two thousand, or five hundred, or whatever we're gonna do, I do want it looked at, and I want it prorated back to the school if it turns out it doesn't cost that much. I do.
As I mentioned last year, the school paid four hundred dollars. Lenell brought, broke it down for me, it was four football games, two baseball games, a soccer game, and a junior varsity game, is what they paid for.
That was just electric?
Four hundred dollars.
Just electric?
Right, so take the, we're talking about football and the wear and tear on the field, take those baseball games out of it, out of that four hundred.
Okay, Dave, just so I understand, if we made a motion to change the resolution to read in effect, we would charge the school two thousand dollars for the season, and that would cover football and baseball?
Correct, and you retain the seventy-five dollar electrical?
Right.
Right. So, instead of the two hundred, two hundred, two hundred, you just have a flat rate that would apply to those, those events, total, one time?
Okay, all right. Well, I'll make a motion to that effect, then, along with reviewing, um...
Usage...
Next, usage agreement, uh, next, early next year with, uh, is it the Facilities Committee, Mike, that's called?
Facilities? We should know, because we should know by April what the cost of it is.
Mike, Mike will be able to break it down fairly well.
Yeah. And then we've got a really good idea for next year, and then we'll give it back if it turns out it didn't cost us that much. I, I think it's fair.
So, that's, that's my motion.
What, what was the amount, Bill?
Motion, two thousand.
Two thousand?
Then there's the light, the light fee.
Also the light fee, seventy-five per event that uses lights.
Right.
Okay. Well, that's, that's more than what we're, we were thinking of charging.
Well, Derek made the suggestion, talk...
I didn't say the amount.
You didn't, you did say, hey, about, about two thousand. I'm kidding, I'm giving you a hard time.
I've had eight events that...
We were, I think we were basing it sixteen...
About sixteen.
Fifteen hundred, let's make it fifteen hundred.
Oh, boy.
I'm no, I don't know what to say, but it doesn't really matter.
We gotta quit fooling around here.
If it turns out it's more...
I will amend my motion to read fifteen hundred...
All right, sorry.
For the year, plus the light usage for all the games.
Yeah.
Okay.
And reviewed next year.
And reviewed next year.
Motion to take a vote?
Well, we...
So, you have to, is there a second to amending the resolution?
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Four to two.
Four to two.
Steve and...
Morris.
Morris.
Morris voting against.
Okay, moving on, food truck discussion.
You prefer food trucks or mobile food units?
Mobile food units.
Sounds classier, like we can charge a higher fee for that.
Thank you.
Food trucks.
Since the last council meeting, we took a look at several different food truck, mobile food unit codes and ordinance and standards and provisions, and kinda picked and chose, and, and just as we handed out to the city council, we kinda highlighted in yellow, maybe some of the choices, maybe some of the items that were, would merit some discussion and some input from the, from the council. This assumes for the moment that the council intent is to go ahead and possibly amend an ordinance with language that would allow food trucks to operate in the community, subject to whatever terms and conditions that the council will discuss tonight. So, what I'd like to do is invite you just, and I'll go through each one of the highlighted sections, and we'll try to, we'll try to have some conversation about each one, assuming that we're gonna get through this, and then, then we'll make a decision as to whether or not to vote the, the entire package and go forward, but we'll try to take them one by one in the order that, that they're presented.
Okay.
I will say, too, that I, I did share the draft that you've seen with Chris Larson at Tillian. We have had a conversation, and I'll just mention as I go what his comments have been. It's really just one item in the, in the provisions that, that he was concerned about. So, starting out with item two A, and, and this is a fairly common standard, that if there's a food truck that's going to be operating for a particular nonprofit community event, that that food truck wouldn't be required to have a license, wouldn't be required to pay the fee, provided it's a nonprofit, and that's a fairly standard thing, so if it's something that this council feels that you'd like to include in an ordinance, if we go ahead, that language would, would be fine. And that's fairly typical, I mean, we, I saw more non-licensed food trucks for nonprofit events than I did for ordinances that required them to pay a, a fee as well.
And I've seen the Lions truck around, like, for example, that's what you're talking about, okay.
Item, hearing no opposition to that, item two B. Now, this, this gets into the question of, of where do food trucks operate in Cannon Falls if they're gonna operate at all? Are they gonna be limited to a, a site only on private property? Some ordinances have done that. Are they gonna be allowed in a public street? Are they gonna be allowed in a public parking lot? Is there gonna be a distinction between private and, and public land? So, in some cases, actually, more often than not, we saw that if a food truck was gonna be operating on private property, that it would not, there would not be required to have, have a license issued to them on private. I'm not sure I'm necessarily in favor of that, but, but I saw many ordinances that just said, "If you're on private property, it's kinda like a private business, we, the city, are okay with that."
What, what about in the case of, because Tillian's made, has made a request, they were talking about putting it on the west side of their building, which I...
Our property.
It's our property.
Our property, yep. So, again, just keep in mind, there's a distinction between private property and public property as we go through, and we'll need some direction if we're gonna go ahead. Is it wide open, private and public? Is it just private? Is it just public? And if it's just public, is it streets, or is it just parking lots? Is it the area next to Tillian Brewery that we own? It's not really a parking lot, and not really a street. So, kinda keep that in mind as, as we go forward, and, and maybe not make that decision quite yet, because there's some other overlapping provisions here. Item two C, boy, this was all over the board. One license per year, a hundred licenses per year. You know, it really varied, you know, significantly from, from ordinance to ordinance. Three is just a number that Diane stuck in here with my conversation with her, just for, for your review. The license fee of two fifty? Fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty, two hundred, two fifty, a thousand, three thousand, that varies a lot, too, so what Diane had to do, when she looked at her other licenses, kinda picked a number and said, "A license for a full season per truck, two hundred and fifty." That's something that, obviously, there'll be some more input from, from the council on. But let's go through the second page, there, let's go through the whole thing, and we'll revisit the public, private, and also the, the amount in a moment. Second page, item six, duration of sales, when, when can there be a food truck? I know when John reported, and I reported after we talked to the folks at Tillian, they were saying, "You know, Memorial Day to Labor Day, the season, that'd be great." Okay? Seven days a week, five days a week, two days a week? I mean, all those are, are variables in the other ordinances that, that we've seen. Here, it's simply saying that the season for Conversation Tonight is Memorial Day to Labor Day. If, if that's something we talked a little bit about before, if that seems to be okay, that's, that would be consistent with many of the other ordinances that I've seen. This twenty-one day, days of season, the, the issue there is to differentiate a mobile food truck, or food truck, from a, a bricks and mortar business, that you can't have in front of your retail shop a food truck the whole season. You gotta, you gotta move it around. A food truck is mobile, it's got to move around. So, the most consistent number that, that we saw in other ordinances was that you can't park your food truck in front, in front of a single location for more than 21 days. I don't think there's any magic in it, but that's, that's what we've seen.
21 days total or 21 days consecutive?
Consecutive, yep.
Okay.
Well, this one's actually for more, for, for the entire season. So it'd be 20, I'm sorry, 21 days for the, the entire season in this example.
Okay, alright.
Signs, fairly typical that mobile food trucks have signs. And the sign allowance of 12 square feet, not excessive, not too limiting, I don't think. If we're going to have signage, we would have to authorize it here. We do have a sign ordinance, and we probably want to authorize it in the licensing if we're going to have it. So that's kind of for your, for your input as we, as we go forward too. The next page, item 10. Parking, which is really if, if food trucks are going to be allowed to operate on the public streets, that in many ordinances, there's a restriction in terms of how many parking spaces they can reserve or use for those trucks. And two is a, is a fairly typical standard. So, if we're going to allow them on public streets, and we, and we wanted to have them kind of move around, or if they're going to be parking in, in, in parking spaces that they wouldn't use more than two. I don't think there's any magic in that if, if we want to go ahead with, with allowing them on public streets. Hours of operation discretionary, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Maybe it ends too early, maybe it starts too late. I mean, that's a discretionary decision of, of the council. Locations 14. There again, and this gets a little too fine, I think, even in our ordinances, or maybe perhaps a little bit too limiting. Some ordinances, many of them actually said, food trucks can operate in the public right-of-way if they're in the quote-unquote "traditional downtown", the traditional retail area. Food trucks can maybe operate outside of the downtown area, even on privately-owned property in the industrial park, as an example. So the, so the distinguishing language in locations, again, gets back to, are these trucks allowed on public land or private land, and based on zoning? Is it okay out in the industrial park? Is it okay in the south corridor? Or is it just okay downtown? Discretionary choice by, by the council again. Item 16, city parks, yes or no? Pretty simple, yes or no? You have to answer that if we're going to have them in the parks. 17 and 18 are, are kind of interesting in that the Wine and Art Festival has food, right? We, we could have in our ordinance, we could allow a, a food truck to operate at the same time period as the Wine and Art Festival, but maybe not within the Wine and Art Festival designated area. So if there was going to be a food truck operating that same weekend, this simply says it has to operate at least 500 feet or more away from the Wine and Art Festival. So it gives the city the ability to kind of regulate a little bit about business that might happen at the same time as other community events, that aren't vending within that event, but they could vend within the community, subject to some distance and separation. Kind of a way to control the market is what it is. And 18, this is, this is the one, and this varies a little bit, but it, but it's the similar food term. You know, and we've talked about this, and we'll use, I always hate to use pizza, because then Dudley calls me, but I'll use pizza. Would, would there be a pizza food truck at Tillian? If there is, is it within 200 feet? Within 300 feet? Within 500 feet of, of another pizza provider? And we can't really legally say, nah, you can't sell pizza here in your food truck. But we can have some separation from existing districts. So this is the one fairly common provision that helps differentiate the business of a food truck from other bricks and mortar businesses that operate in the community, and they do it by distance. 200 is, is typically the, the minimum distance that I've seen. Normally, 300, a block or so, tends to be, maybe 500, maybe two blocks, close to two blocks. So there can be a separation agreement. So, from an overall perspective, this was, the ordinance that we presented you tonight is far from the most detailed standards that we saw, and it's certainly not the fewest standards that we've seen. It kind of felt like it was an in-between one that captured some of the conversation that I've heard from some of you in the past, some of the conversation that I've heard from Tillian and others who have talked to us about food trucks. But I think if we're going to go ahead, we need to kind of decide some of these policy decisions in terms of public-private property, separation, you know, of, of businesses from food trucks. Where we're going to allow them to operate? When can they operate? That sort of thing. But I think we could go down one by one and see where the majority falls within each one of these standards, and then figure out, do we want to go ahead or not?
Okay.
Any questions on anything generally that?
Is this the time to mention something that I don't see addressed here?
Go ahead.
Seating. Are we going to allow them to bring chairs and tables in? There's nothing?
Yeah, there is, there is a no.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry, Morris. I'm sorry, I missed it.
No, that's fine.
I missed it.
Have to stand up to eat.
Okay, well, it's alright, more calories.
Why do we not want to have seating?
I would say from a policy provision, it, it starts to look more like a, an outdoor restaurant in that typically, even here, because we do have some outdoor sidewalk opportunities, like at the winery, that it would start to compete with that kind of establishment. So I think that's the primary reason.
Okay, okay, alright. Oh, I see, it's even got its own thing.
So maybe, maybe start with the public versus private.
Thanks.
Public streets, public parking lots, private property. Preference?
All.
Two out of three? One out of three? None? What, what do you think? That's probably the one here that, that.
Well, who would want it on private property?
I suppose a person who owned a restaurant.
Artisan Plaza perhaps? Even though they have restaurants there? They would maybe, a specialized food truck would come in on a Saturday afternoon and sit on the private parking lot. David Olson has not suggested that to me or asked me about that, but there'd be an example.
Or parking lot, Merchants Bank may want to bring one in for their appreciation days or something.
Or if the, the, the land you mentioned earlier, Bill, next to Tillian, if that was deeded over. They have made that request in the past, we haven't done it. If that property on the west side of Tillian was owned by them?
I don't see a problem, but I would still want to license them.
On private?
Yeah, I, I would, just so we know who's operating. But maybe that, maybe that's going too far. I don't know.
You know, the, the other, the other maybe market potential here for food truck might be the industrial park, where we have a concentration of, of employees working during those hours, and, and maybe, then maybe there's a market there where a food truck would want to be licensed to, to operate out there.
Yeah.
So private land may be okay?
I'm okay with private land. I'm okay with private land. I don't see a problem with that.
City streets?
I think so.
Is there any, is there anything that, like, the state has to say about Highway 19?
They would regulate that.
So that would, we would defer to them?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would only be local streets, city streets.
So 4th Street and, yeah, okay, alright.
Mill Street.
Mill Street.
Right. Is that a county road, Mill Street?
No.
No, it isn't.
Your, your downtown main, so Highway 19 is your east-west, the 4th Street downtown proper, heading south out of stoplights is county, north out of the stoplights is Minda, Highway 20.
Right, okay. So we would defer to them, otherwise it would be our, I think that's fair. It's our call otherwise.
Public streets?
Yeah.
Didn't one time somebody want to set up by Highway 19 and a parking lot down there?
Yeah, yep. And we'll get, we'll do parking lots next, but yeah.
Okay.
So public streets?
Yeah, fine.
Parking lots?
Yeah, why not? That's where I think of them.
Probably the best spot.
One city lot going onto the trail.
Can I add something? Consider the library parking lot. I would not want a food truck in the library parking lot, because our parking is so limited.
I would agree with that. You've got, you've got limited parking.
Yeah, so I, I would request that you add a caveat that there be, that it not be allowed in the library parking lot.
And we could, we could exclude here, as could the library board.
Right, okay. I think that's fair.
So we can just, probably maybe easier for us just to exclude the library lot?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Any input on the number of licenses or permits? And this is one of the, the Chris Larson's points. He was a little concerned about this language that said there's going to be three licenses issued per season. In his question, which I think is a valid one, his question is, well, well, what about the food truck that's going to come down here two or three times a season versus the entire season? And you issue three that are going to be here for the entire season, which would preclude the other one coming for a weekend or two or three. We, we have other license provisions, farmers' market included, where we'll, where we'll issue a license for a day or for a period, and not limit it to a total number per season, and that's fine too. We just wanted a starting point here for that. And like I say, I think Chris's perspective is, it, it, it's maybe more limiting than, than it really needs to be, and it might preclude food trucks from really coming in and testing the market, because they don't want to operate for the entire season, they don't want to pay the 250 or the 500 or what. So, I think there's some sense in that. You see head shaking? Okay.
What number would you want to open that up to?
We, we might not say.
Do we have?
We might.
Oh, great, great. Perfect.
Leave it more open-ended, but we wouldn't require a seat. We, we could have a seasonal license, but we could also have something with less than a season.
Right, sure.
I, I think that's fair.
And then I think I'm going to leave the 250 out of the conversation right now. So if we do go forward with an ordinance, we'll get a chance to weigh in, but we'll kind of redo the, the licensing number and the fees, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Item 6, the, the season, are you comfortable all year? Seasonally before Memorial Day and maybe after Labor Day?
I kind of like the all-year. I mean, if they're going to pay the 250?
Yeah.
I limit them. It's nice in March and April.
And if they're, especially like if they're going to be on the industrial park, the Lawrence Meats people have lunch in March too.
Yep.
I, I think all year.
Eat in the wintertime?
They do. I do.
I do.
When I worked in the metro, and we'd have an Oggies truck stop, it would be year-round. So you can go out, you move a little faster in January than you do July, but.
I think opening up to, to the private properties and not limiting it geographically by zoning districts, it would make sense to spend the season if you wanted it for the full year.
Always try it.
Exactly.
Okay. Signs, signs are okay?
Signs are okay.
Got to advertise.
Question, question for council. As I look at this, originally your season was going to be much shorter. Are you still going to limit the total number of days to 21? Just trying to figure from an enforcement standpoint.
Yeah, 21 days in front of a specific business.
Any one location.
So, it could be.
For instance, the Lawrence Meats.
Yeah, that is going to be an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if they park on their private property, they're not inhibited by the days, correct?
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Right.
Yep, thank you. Clarification.
Good.
I think the parking provision's not taking more than two spaces. That's 40 feet roughly. That's, a lot of the trucks that we saw, there were size limitations of a maximum 40-foot in length. So I think having a prohibition against, you know, taking more than two spaces?
Spaces, yeah.
Seems to make some sense. I'm seeing, okay. Hours of operation? Any strong feelings, one way or the other, there?
I'd say 7:00 AM. Just so they can bring the Starbucks truck to the, to the farmer's market earlier. Well, no, I mean, if someone wants to do.
Starburst truck?
I should Starbucks. Sorry.
Just remember, she's sitting next to me. She can hit me.
I have no great objection to the earlier time.
But, that's just a thought. But 9:00, 9:00 PM seems reasonable, because it's pretty dark by then usually. So.
Strong feeling about 7:00 versus 8:00? 7:00?
Let's say, you know, what if Tillian or somebody wanted, you know, had something going on? It's 9 o'clock. You know, would they want a?
They close at 10:00.
They close at 10:00.
Oh, do they? Oh, okay.
9:00 is probably reasonable.
So 9:00 would be okay.
Okay, alright.
So I have one 7:00 and?
7:00 to 9:00.
Alright. Another strong 7:00. It's in. The locations, we'll modify that to fit kind of the entire community that we're talking about here. City parks, in, out?
Now, if you include the, the local guys, you know, Lions do the east-side part.
And they're going to be okay again if, on, on, on event periods, if they want to get a, an entire year license, then they would have to meet the requirements here. But they're a nonprofit, so.
But they're allowed in the park now.
Allowed in the park, yep. And we're allowed in the streets next to the park.
Or the pool park? If we say yes, the pool parking lot, Hannah's Ben parking lot, not driving around on the grass like the.
Lions actually go on the grass in the.
Yep, Riverside, Veterans Memorial.
Where they park the bus. During the city-wide garage sale, they always sell brats out of the.
Yeah.
On the street, I think.
Yeah.
It, it seems more comfortable if they're actually parked in the streets, serving on the grass and the boulevards.
That's what they do. Right.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
We can find out about that. But it seems to, it would seem to be more comfortable to me to keep the trucks in the street, not on the, in the parks.
Right.
And they can be adjacent to the park?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yes.
We'll go adjacent, okay. Within 500 feet of a community event? Maybe it applies, maybe it never applies. I, I, but, I, I've had, had people with our farmer's market experiences and others, we have had people kind of hanging around during those community events that aren't necessarily part of the community events. I mean, I think it makes some sense to have something, whether it's 500 feet, I, I don't know if that's a huge detriment or not, but, but that's the, that's the reasoning, the rationale why, why it's in there.
Is the farmer's market considered a community event?
No.
No, okay.
No.
We've been talking a lot about baseball tonight. What about John Birch Park? You know, Bears games?
They have concession stands.
I know they do, but is there, could they?
Saying 500 feet away from the park.
Oh, I see.
So, that's, that would be that, then, okay.
I think if you're, you know, from an enforcement standpoint, looking through, there's a couple of other things, but I think that would be something that you would want to call out and identify, either by providing council approval for a part, you know, something that would permit it, as opposed to just a, an absolute exclusion.
Okay, so saying what we permit, not what we exclude.
And then, you know, the same thing, as I looked at the, you know, the overnight storage, the duration of sales, you already clarified that it's public, city property. It would probably be good to call that out within that section. So if somebody, you know, say for instance Gemini has a mobile food truck that comes there, and they tell the guy, yeah, you can just park it in our lot all week long, does this apply to that? Or does it only apply to leaving it on a, a public roadway? Small things, but small things always become problematic for us.
No, yeah, that's true.
We'll see if we can find some.
Overnight was number 7, if you were looking for that one, Bill.
Overnight, sure. Would that, how would that work, private versus public? I assume we're talking public here?
I assume two, but it doesn't say.
But clarify for public.
Mm-hmm, you know, if.
I, I think you would have to, because why couldn't Gemini, on their property, keep it there the whole time?
Yeah, we'll clarify that to mean public.
Okay.
Yep, for eight, or for seven.
Oh, that's right.
The proximity to other similar businesses? 200 feet? 300 feet? Block? 500 feet?
How far is it from the front door of Brewster's to the front door of Chuggers? And they're, they're already pretty close.
Right.
200 feet sounds reasonable though, to be, to be honest.
How far is it from Tillian to Mill Street?
Yeah, right next door.
It'd fall within the 200.
Yeah, within the 200.
I was actually more...
But similar food, too, so it could be a Thai place or a barbecue place.
Right.
I was actually more concerned as far as the brewery with the restrictions from the street, where two streets intersect with Veterans Lane and Mill Street, and then alleys intersect because you have an alley or driveway, excuse me, is I think how it's referenced, right adjacent to it. So I pulled it up and I think they're gonna be fine. I didn't go out and measure it, but...
At two?
Yeah, well, whatever the distance referenced in here was.
Right.
Okay.
The 200 feet, you know, it's roughly about half a block on most city blocks.
Mm-hmm.
200's fine.
Leave it at 200? Just to make it safe so that it's not, so that it's less for Mill Street? The establishment, not the street?
Well, that's a question, and we have two unknowns here. What's, what's being sold at the, at the food truck and where's it being sold from? And then the third question is how far is it away from, and I'll pick on Dudley again.
Mm-hmm.
Dudley's.
Right.
So those are the three variables, so I, I think, Matt, that if, if you want to be a little bit more protective of the bricks and mortar restaurants, having the larger number is probably better.
Okay.
In terms of separation. The, the smaller the number, the closer proximity the food truck can be to a competing business, if in fact it's a competing business. And, I mean, it's one thing if the food truck is selling pretzels versus pizza. It's clearly not a competing business.
Sure.
But some of these food trucks offer a broader menu and my preference is not to get in and micromanage the food truck to the proximity to the business.
Well, because then we can get into the problem, too, how about two food trucks?
Yeah, well, but I just want to be considerate, obviously for the brick and mortar buildings, but also Tillian is the one that we've been talking to the most about this. This is, this is essentially trying to open the door for them to have food trucks and I'd hate to say, well, it's 200 feet and they have a burger shack and then Mill Street comes out and says, hey, they're selling burgers, they're within 200 feet, get them out of here. I, I just don't want to, I'd like to avoid that.
Right.
Yeah. No, that makes sense.
You're not obligated to have this provision in there.
At all.
At all.
I...
I mean, I, I would say it was 50/50, the ones that I looked at, that did, did or didn't.
Mm-hmm.
But it seemed like there was some concern, obviously I've heard some concern in the past couple of years about the competing nature of a food truck, so that's why.
Well, and also, as we've said earlier, too, allowing food trucks is also a way for, especially like Tillian, to get by without having a kitchen. So it's helping them a lot, you know, because they're, they've been the ones that have been chiefly asking for this, although I'm sure other businesses would like it, too, but I think the 200 sounds fair. 200 feet to start, anyway.
Keep it for now and think about it?
Yeah.
Sure.
All right.
There's no doubt we're gonna have to tweak...
Right.
This type of ordinance a few times, probably.
Yeah. That helps, because we haven't had this conversation really. That really helps narrow the field here a little bit and we can put it into an ordinance format and give you another shot at it.
Okay.
Have some more conversation, clarifications if we need, but this will at least narrow it down.
Well, this will be an agreement for 2019. Let's revisit it in January next year and if we gotta tweak it then, too.
We'll know by then whether it's working.
Yep. Well, if we, as we do this by ordinance, even if, we'd have to have the reading on the second and then again on the 16th.
Yeah, it's gonna take two meetings of the council.
That's a month less of their time.
Well, there's at least two weeks less opportunity to vend, but I would say it offers whoever wants to pursue a license through us for a food truck, it offers them some additional time to repair and schedule. I mean, I, I don't know that there's 15 food trucks in the queue just waiting for us to pull the trigger, so... And I, and I think Tillian and others would know if, if we go through a first reading, the two weeks in between that, they're gonna know, well, at least this is kind of what the ground rules are gonna be and they can start having some conversations, so. Not perfect, but not the end of the world, either. Okay. All right.
Is there anything about the fair when it operates? I'm trying to keep the fairgrounds fairground, I mean, are you guys concerned about the Fair Board of Food Trucks setting up? Close proximity to you, because we can...
Again, it would be the 500.
Be a private, be a private owner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I'm not having that at the fair, I mean, setting up in close proximity to the fair to take business away from them.
Right.
Just functionally, you know, during the fair, we restrict parking, you know, along Ninety and pretty much all the way down past, oh, I suppose almost Estate Street.
They couldn't, the swimming pool parking lot, it's too close.
And, you know, you called out the, the library parking lot, you know, that might be something to consider is if you want to also call out the pool lot without delineating, you know, specific council approval or something, so somebody just doesn't set up shop.
Yeah.
And, you know, all of a sudden you're not selling your snacks and, you know, whatever it is that they may, may sell there.
Well, or it's just causing a problem, you know, with congestion and such, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Let's move on to reports.
Question. I have a question.
Yep.
With this ordinance being for the city, how does that affect the three-hour FunFests five times a year?
It can't be within how many feet of an event?
500 feet. Wow. They wouldn't be, these other, these, I'm, we're talking about, there'd be a 500-foot...
Oh, the other food trucks, okay.
Yours would be fine, because they'd be in the...
The ones that register with you are fine. Part of the event.
Yes, yours are in the event, no, no issue there. I see what you're getting at, Kyle, yeah.
And so the food vendors for the FunFest would not have to get the license?
They're not a food truck.
No.
No, they're not considered, for this purpose, they're not considered food trucks.
I've got two food trucks that are probably coming in July.
Yeah, no, they're considered vendors for you.
Yep.
Okay.
That's different, yes. You are right.
Thank you for that clarification.
What are they?
Oh, my gosh.
You getting hungry?
Great. Cheese curds?
You know, Don's Crumble Beef is a truck.
Yeah.
And then also, there's another one out of Byron called Bob's Smokehouse Ribs, or Smokestack Ribs.
There you go.
That's a truck and a trailer.
Yeah. No, those are, those are your vendors, they're separate.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
I'm hungry. Okay, we'll move on. Reports. Council Committee, Commission? The Public Works? No. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
You can, you start with Public Works.
Okay, all right. Well, actually, we had our meeting a week ago, Monday. We had four items that we took care of this evening and now those were the main items. We still have some continuing items. I will say our next meeting is on July 15th at 4:30 here in the council chambers. Okay. EDA?
I can, I can start and Morris and John can add anything that they want to. The main item of business that last week's EDA meeting was we received a bid for the demolition of the Lee Chevrolet property and the bid amount was slightly higher than the EDA was prepared to spend at this point. But in fairness to the bidder and fairness to the EDA, the concern, which we talked to a couple of folks who we thought were going to bid and didn't bid, the concern was some questions about the, the asbestos that had been identified in the environmental.
Great.
And so what we've decided to do is go out and try to seek quotations to remove the asbestos prior to demolition of the building. So we'll now look at this as a, as a two-step process. We'll abate the asbestos and then we'll go back out with a more standard excavator demolition crew bid proposal to actually take the building down. So working with asbestos, Greg knows this, is, is an exciting opportunity for all of us and we've learned a lot and I, I think we'll, our hope is at the EDA level that the decision to, to split the building between asbestos and demolition will still come in with more favorable bids, less cost to the EDA than the single bid that we received based on our proposals. So that was one item. The second item, just for information, and I'll pass this out. The EDA and Blandon Foundation and our local food businesses have been working the last couple of months on putting together a brand for local foods. I'm just passing through the, the selected logo, not the brand itself, but it was, it's just recently been adopted by the Economic Development Authority and we're moving forward now to do a number of things to actually implement the mission and the goals that we've established by our brand for Cannon Roots, our local foods brand in Cannon Falls. So we're just finishing that up now, that phase. And again, that, there was cost participation by Blandon and the EDA to, to assist us with this, so that's moving forward. One other report, I'll just add this to, to the EDA since I mentioned Blandon. Blandon was in town today. We, our, our steering committee members and our project coaches met with Blandon today to go through not just this project and where we're at on the, on the branding, but the other projects that we're doing, including the distribution of the few, of the free computers, the, the online training that's largely led by Laura Qualley throughout the community and also our work headed up largely by Mike Gesmi and Dan Pecorino at Hiawatha Broadband to find a way to extend Wi-Fi services out into the, into the school district, which is our community for, for Blandon. And so I'll be bringing to the council, probably in July, a proposed lease by Hiawatha Broadband for additional equipment to be placed on the water tower, which would substantially expand the, the service territory for Wi-Fi into the school district boundaries. Again, financed significantly by Blandon. So that project now is, is, is moving forward on a, on a more rapid schedule, I would say. So Blandon came today, we, we made our presentation, had a good couple hour meeting with them. They're satisfied that we're actually fulfilling the requirements of the contract and we're actually spending some of the $75,000 grant that they've provided to us and they're excited to hear that we're making good progress on, on the four projects that we've begun and we've got a couple of other projects in the queue that we'll be looking at. So, so that occurred today and, and it was a great meeting and I'm happy to report that Blandon was, was happy, I think, with what they heard. So that's all I have on EDA unless John or, or Morris has any.
You think, no, I think that's it.
Okay.
Okay, Personnel Committee?
You report on that, too, if there's anything else from you three. That Personnel Committee meeting last week, we talked about the, the position that we're advertising for in the Public Works Department, the Maintenance Two position. We had a good conversation on that. That ad has been, has been posted again for that position. And then we also talked about the contract for the city administrator and recognizing that the, the deadline for that is, is July 3rd, so we're working, we're working on that as well. So I don't think there was anything else that we had, really, that...
I think that was it.
So...
Okay, we'll go around the horn. Greg, got anything? Yes, I do. Contractors in cleaning up on the East Side project. They did some concrete repairs Monday. They're working to fix a few things on the sod and they'll be striping the parking areas by the park tomorrow and pretty much wrapping things up. But I would encourage everyone over there on the East Side that's got new sod, please mow it as high as you can, don't scalp it down, it's gonna perform better and we're gonna have better luck, but by and large, it's looking good. We are heading into the hottest, driest part of the summer. So that's a couple of things left on their list, but they should be getting them wrapped up soon. Cut it high and water it, yeah.
I just got one thing tonight. It was a few months ago, you guys allowed me to put in for that DNR grant that is gonna rehab the trail from Highway 20 Bridge to Upper Hannah's and then do the connector to the Milltowns Trail, that we did get awarded for funding for that. So we were awarded $109,500 to do that project. So found that out yesterday, so that's, that's good. It was a good, good team effort. I said some thank yous out today to the people that helped me put that grant together. There was about five of us that put a lot of time into that, so I thanked them, that was, that was good. So we'll, we got some staff time to put into it now to complete the application process now that the funding has been awarded. So the DNR will be reaching out to me soon to start some staff time with that and then get to bid process so we can get the project done next year, so that's the plan.
Great.
Nicole?
Okay, so, carrying on about grants. So this picture up here is our new mural in the teen area of the library. It was paid for with a grant that the library was awarded. We, we submitted a grant in collaboration with the Cannon Arts Board to Selco for a community collaborations grant. And this was paid for with the Minnesota Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund, which we also know as the Legacy Amendment. And what we did was we hired Kelly Bickman, who is a native of Cannon Falls and graduated from Cannon Falls High School, but now she lives in Woodstock, New York. But we hired her to come back home and work with area teens to teach them how to make a mural. So this mural was completely the kids' creation. They, it started with concept drawings on paper where, where the teens just kind of doodled and figured out what they wanted to do and then they planned it and then they sketched it out on the boards. The boards were donated from interstate lumber and then they painted it. And this was done between Tuesday and Thursday last week. So they did morning and afternoon sessions, finished it up Thursday. It was installed on our wall on Friday morning. And then we had an unveiling ceremony last Friday night and we had about 70 people there. And please stop by, it's really cool. You can't tell all of the little details, but like there are little quotes decoupaged on there. You've gotta look in the building because like there are some really interesting characters. They chose Dr. Phil for some odd reason, but it was meaningful to them, so that's cool. But this whole project started because in Teen Advisory Board at the high school, Matthew was asking the kids, well, what can we do for you? And they said, well, you know, there really are not a lot of arts opportunities for teens in Cannon Falls. What can we do? So he talked to Marcy and then she had the idea to hire Kelly and then it just went from there. The, the grant was written in a couple of days and submitted and Selco loved it. And so right now I'm finishing, I'm writing my report to send into the state and I, I sent this picture to the legislators in the mail today, so they would see what we've done.
You said there were, what, 15 or so?
There were 15 kids who did it.
Good.
So, yeah, I'm very impressed and I'm very proud. It, it was a really good team effort. And when we gave out the, the surveys and the evaluations, it was all positive. Everybody who participated had a positive experience and everybody who came to the unveiling thought it was really great, too. So wonderful thing that happened in our library.
Very nice, very nice.
Very good.
Yeah.
Hey, Chief?
We will be getting to fair time fairly rapidly. So I haven't heard from the Fair Board yet this year, who is handling their parade, but I'm assuming they're moving back to the Minnesota path.
Yeah, I'll verify that, starting at the school, back to the old playground.
So I was talking with the Public Works Director, we'll be just double checking our barricade location, all of that, to make sure everything's current. There will be some interruption for people that live along that stretch, obviously. We try to minimize it as best we can, but we're looking forward to having a successful fair again this year.
Dave? Dave? Okay. Steve?
Nothing.
Matt?
Park Board meeting Thursday night.
Be there aloha.
Bill?
I have nothing.
Derek?
Nothing for me.
Harry Jill?
Nothing.
Matt?
Nope.
I got a couple of events, but we're gonna go to public input. So to some they speak, the issue is not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to city business and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. The city council will not take action on any issue raised by the public but may choose to schedule, schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Babe? I find it ironic that we spent a half an hour talking about John Birch Park and what we're gonna charge the school. The last meeting we were in here, we were talking about sustain. Not one of you asked how much we spent on the nasal ranger? How much staff time? What did the staff do? Do you know you're in excess of $20,000 to $30,000 that you burned doing that? I have a little pictures, too, I wanna send around. I'm glad Greg's here. Nobody talked about the sod up on the West Side. I was at the Public Works Commission meeting. It was about to get mox-nixed and I think I resurrected it by interrupting inappropriately like I've been known to do before and I will continue to do so, if that's what it takes. Nobody said a word. It was a failure. Greg is to blame for some of that. There were lead lines up on that West Side, dug up and covered up. Greg is to blame for a little bit of that, but mostly it's the rest of your staff. And what I'm trying to tell you, folks, is that your staff has been failing you. You've been burning money left and right and you're worried about the school and John Birch Park? It's been operating under contract since 1980, come on. Isn't that big a deal, we're all one community? The school cul-de-sac, major failure, and it is Greg. But we continue to talk about the North Side project and continue to hire him, but nobody wants to hold him accountable for what he's done. It took six months for him to come back to tell us that it was a $4,000 mistake. Bill, did you look into that? You're the chairman, that's what you claim. You got any idea what it cost? I'll bet it's 10 times that. That's what my money says. So I'm spending my money to go next door to get the plans and specs and the prices so I can have a friend of mine, who's much smarter than I am in this area, and we're gonna depict what it was that we spent fixing his mistakes. So why would we fight with the school when we have problems right here in our own little home? What about the library? That's the picture you guys are looking at. Do you know that you spent like $3,000 fixing the roof on your brand new 1.5 million dollar library? Sounds like a lot of money, doesn't it? You burn half of that every year right in that man's department. Nobody bats an eye at it. But we wanna go after the school for $1,500 a year, because they're using the park they've used since I was a boy. Come on. What about Chuck Peterson? That was brought up this week. His name's public and so is his salary. You've been underpaying him for about five years. But hey, I think I got it fixed. I told Chuck, why don't you just start stealing stuff? Not only will you get paid in full, you'll probably get about a $10,000 a year bonus.
I'm not gonna say anything. I'm not gonna say anything. Keep your mouth shut.
Okay, I'm Don King, I live at 1024 Hoffen Street West and I'm here to try to fix what was done on the 2016 project. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak at this meeting. Last week I contacted City Administrator Maroni regarding some concerns I have about the condition in the front yard, once the street improvements project were done. Unfortunately, following the project, the sod placed in the front yard and the boulevard did not do well. I support the need to pay assessments for street improvements and I so-so believe in the sidewalks, maybe not. I hopefully, that because the project scope included restoration of the grass in our front yard, that the council would consider compromising with me on a mutual end goal to return the grass in my front yard to the similar condition. I would request the assistance of the city to remove five to six inches of the fill that was put in there on the front yard and the boulevard and black dirt, preferably not compost material we brought in, compacted and graded. Once this is done, I will have the...
Once this is done, I will have the, I will personally plant the grass seed and handle the watering and the maintenance of the yard going forward. I know there were some issues with the previous city Public Works Director, and I think with the problems they had with Heinz's and the State Street project, there should've been somebody up there watching what the heck was going on with the end, you know, when the sod and the, and the fill was laid. Because, you know, I don't know, I wasn't there when it was put in. I was sorry I wasn't, 'cause I think I got probably the last part of it. And, you know, I should've been like Lyle Noble and said, "Just stay out of my yard. I don't want nothing to, nothing to do." So, I'd appreciate any help on that. Thank you.
Don, how wide of a piece is it? I'm not familiar with how wide the boulevard is.
Well, the boulevard, it's more than the boulevard. They went, when they put the sidewalk in, you know, there's a boulevard, okay? And that's probably, what, eight feet or 10 feet or whatever that is? Well, then they went, you know, I, well, you lived there. The sidewalk goes to the mailbox, and then they, there's a little square, and they took all that out, which was great because I thought, "Well, that's gonna match up." And then, they went probably three-fourths or, yeah, three-fourths of the way up to the, on the west part of that, on the other, on the west side of the sidewalk, up towards the house. And that's, they kinda made a jag in like that. And that is, you know, I brought, well, I was at the Public Works Meeting, I bought a soil, I took soil samples. It was about this much black dirt. And when John came up to put his sign in for reelection, he couldn't even get the sign in the, in the yard. That's how bad it was.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sue Wilson, 700 West Hoffman Street, and I'm here to talk about the same matter. I live, my boulevard has looked the same for 35 years I've lived there. And then, when they redid the sidewalks and the streets, first of all, I had to have a sidewalk re-put in that had just been put in 10 years before, nothing wrong with it. I didn't get any leeway for that. They just did it the way they do. And second of all, we were not notified when you did your vote, three to zero, about the sod on the West Side. You didn't ask our opinion. You didn't send us a letter and say, "You know, we're gonna have a vote on this. Do you have some input in the matter?" Nope, nobody knew a thing. You just went and did it, three to zero. We're not doing a thing about it. I called the City Hall, and they said, "Nope, the matter's done." And then, they sent me an email and said, "No, there's nothing we can do about it." My boulevard is like a weed factory. There's no grass. First of all, Mr., I won't mention his name, but he's no longer with us, but he took out my trees and my boulevard. And I've had nice shade, nice grass, 35 years. No, he took the trees out 'cause he was afraid they would fall on somebody's property. Well, then they put the sod in, they watered it a little bit, but not much. And then, it all died and went to weeds. So, now, there's no grass, it's just weeds. And it looks terrible. So, and like I said, in the time that I've lived there, we've had perfect grass until that project, and then it was destroyed. So, if you can look into this and see if there's anything you do, I don't wanna have to water it because my water bill is outrageous the way it is. So, if you can come up with some other idea, I'd appreciate it.
Anybody else, public input?
Good evening. It's Kyle Paulson from the chamber. And I first want to announce that our 28th Annual Golf Tournament is on June 27th, so a week from this Thursday. Right now, we're at 22 teams, and I have three or four more kind of in the wings. So, if you wanna join the fun, it'll be a great day out at the Cannon Golf Club. We are having lunch, playing the game, and we have lots of little games on each of the holes, not all of them, but dinner and the award ceremony afterwards. And so, please come and join us. If you'd like to plan a game or run a game at one of the holes, let me know. Then, on the Fun Fest, the June 13th Fun Fest was absolutely fantastic. I wanna thank the community for coming out in droves that night. We were well over 300 people in that two-block area. It was wonderful to see that much going on. We did have one complaint, that there wasn't enough food vendors. We had four food vendors lined up. One went into the hospital the Monday before. The other one had a scheduling issue that he let me know about that Tuesday. So, if anybody knows any other food vendors, like maybe the cheese curd people, let me know, because we do need more food out there. Any questions?
Well, the weather was perfect.
Absolutely. Would you, can you make sure that happens again in July?
No, you.
Oh, yeah, right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else, public input?
Do you know who I am? I don't have to repeat.
No. Go ahead.
There's probably, I have more to say than the three minutes allow, so I'll just wait. But would like to, I don't know if there's a chance to sit in or have some discussion about Personnel Committee. And then, just wanted to clear something that Mary Jill said, this quote, I'm pretty sure, as she said it this way, "Perception is reality."
It does become that a lot, yeah.
So, I was just thinking about that, but something, so, reality isn't reality? Or, so if you perceive, that's, that's how you said, I have to think about it some more, but it doesn't seem to fit.
Okay.
Unless, is reality the same as realization? So, to...
I'm, I'm not following.
But what you, what you said, am I right, when you said, "Perception is reality"?
I think I was talking about the school at the time, and they perceived that there was...
It has nothing to do with what you're talking about. I'm just, I don't, just, just that phrase you used is all I'm talking about.
So, you don't understand the phrase, "Perception becomes reality"?
Oh, it becomes, I thought you said it is.
No, perception becomes, that's what I meant to say. Perception can become reality, yeah. Sorry.
There's, I would've played or just watched it on the channel this...
If I misspoke, I apologize.
No, I got you.
Okay, anybody else, public input? The second call, public input. Third and final call, public input. Okay, we'll close the public input part of the program. Before we adjourn, I just got a couple of program notes here. Next Thursday, June 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00, MinDOT will be here in the council chambers for a presentation on their Highway 52 project from Cannon Falls to Zambroda, kinda centering around the Hader 52 intersection. And how could we forget, the Cannon Valley Fair is coming up. Actually, it's starting on June 30th through July 4th. Entry day unattractive on Sunday, but we got combine demos, demolition derbies, harness racing, and all, big parade at 11 o'clock on July 4th, capping with the fireworks on night at July 4th. Bigger and better. Just one comment, is that West Side project something that Public Works would take another look at?
Yeah, I'm the one who kinda, at the last commission meeting, kinda brought up that, you know, it, if I'm directed by a commission council, however it's gotta go, I mean, it's not a, you know, especially if it's, if it's homeowners wanting stuff removed and fill put in, I don't think that's a big project. But we do need to, there needs to be some parameters set before I think you just say, "Go." You know, we need to know which, which properties it is we need, we need to do, how far up from the curb line we need to go. We need a scope of the project before we just start going into people's yards and tearing things up, and then everybody starts pointing and wanting something done. So, there, there needs to, in my eyes, I guess my, my opinion would be, we need to send a letter out to everybody that's in that street project, inviting them to come to either a commission meeting or some kind of forum, public forum, they can come and speak on it, say they've got an issue, so we can take a tally of that, we can do that, we can see the scope of the project. We've got some time to do that. I mean, July is not a great month to give them soil and tell them to go for seed. It's probably about the horrible month to get seed to grow. This has been bad for a few years, but it's definitely something by late August, early September, you'd wanna have them having fresh soil there, that if they are gonna plant some grass seed, that's the time to do it, you know, September. And in early October, you want that six to eight-week growing season right there to get some seed established before winter. So, if it's something that the council wishes staff to do, that, that's my recommendations. We have to figure out what the scope is first and the parameters of it, and invite all the infected parties, give them a chance to come and speak on it, and throw their hat in the ring and say, "We have a problem, and this is what it is." And then, and then it gives, you know, Greg got mentioned quite a bit here with SEH tonight about being part of that problem. I mean, it gives us a chance for me to sit down with Greg, decide what went wrong, what we need to do then to make sure it's remedied, and then, and then weigh into on whose expense that's gonna be. You know, is it, is it us and the taxpayers? Is it part of the project? Where do we go with that part? And I mean, that, that can be argued after the fact, too, but there's, I, I would, I just don't wanna go into it blindly and just say, "We're just gonna start going," when people say, "Start ripping my yard up and putting stuff back." I want, I wanna set parameter, I'm gonna do it as. So, that's, that's, that's what I'd ask.
Mike, is it possible that we can get some letters out before our next Public Works Meeting?
Or bring it up your next Public Works Meeting, and set the parameters and then put it out.
We can put it on our agenda.
Yep.
And then, we can discuss, I know we've discussed briefly, you said that it's easy enough to tear the stuff out. The problem comes in is what do we put back? What does the homeowner put? You know, 'cause there's been debates of, "Well, the so-and-so didn't water," or, you know, "The soil was too bad, it didn't take." It's a pretty, I mean, I know it's bad.
And I don't, I mean, especially if they're talking, if the request is five or six inches, I have a lot of compost. I don't have enough to do the entire West Side, and I, and I don't, I don't have black dirt, I have compost. That's all we've got. So, this is fill we'd have to get. There'd be some, there'd be expense to it. You know, this isn't something we can just do on staff time alone. So, there's, there's definitely a few things to look into, you know, before we just say we're gonna go rip up the whole West Side and redo it.
Well, you meet the early part of July. Why don't we just put it back to Public Works?
I'd say, let's put it on the agenda if we can decide on some parameters, and then, and then give the direction, let's put a letter out, let's invite people to that August meeting, and if then, we decide on, we wanna go on something, that's, that's a great time to start it, you know?
We don't want this to drag on forever.
No, no. But I, I don't think we need to be putting dirt in yards in July. I just, I don't see it working out well for people to grow seed in July. It just doesn't. It's too hot, it's too dry. It's...
Okay, well, it's...
And then, this problem is, it's not going anywhere. It's there, and it's been there for a while, so a couple more months is gonna be...
Just add it to the agenda list, and we'll, we'll discuss parameters.
Okay, anybody got anything else? What I'd like to do is a motion adjourned, but let's take like a five-minute break or so, and then we'll come back, and we'll just kinda set up schedules for our work sessions and the budget. Let's take, let's have a motion to adjourn first.
Okay, so moved.
Second. Motion by Bill, a second, by Morris to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. opposed? Carried. We'll take like a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and just talk...
Talk schedules.
Budget here for a little bit.